Yeah. I'd like to follow the meeting on the select board reorganization. Meeting order one of six twenty twenty four. Need additions and deletions. Timing, thank you.
I don't have anything. No, I haven't been able to navigate.
Well, that's next. So Susan's coming.
Okay, so when you come to discuss the appointment.
To add a discussion about the public trustee of funds position, please.
I have a comment. That's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, first of all, I want to congratulate you all on winning your elections and those of you who weren't up for election on having a whole other year of getting yelled at by people. Um, I think I think it's a great team and I really am glad that that it worked out the way it did. I know it probably doesn't have anything to do with this board and I don't even know if it has anything to do with our town manager, but I was a little bit concerned by a couple of things in yesterday's election. Um, I feel like we could have been better prepared for what we should have known was a was going to be a higher than usual turnout. Um, and I saw several people walk away. I hope they came back, but I don't know for certain that they did, obviously. Um, and I think that's really unfortunate. I'm also concerned about the corrals. Um, I realize it's it's the job of the people running the election to make sure that it's easy to get in and out of the building without any encumbrance, but I think those corrals were a little over the top in the sense of separating people who were advocating for a position or for for um um, a bond or something um to be able to to really engage in in the way that they should be able to. Um, so. Yeah, yeah. No, I mean, inside, nothing. You're not allowed to campaign inside. I mean, that's very clear. But outside, from what I've read in the Vermont statutes, you're allowed to campaign outside as long as you are not hindering access to the polling place. And I think I think the approach that was taken was a bit over the top. Given the fact that, you know, there was this is Woodstock and there were people marching around with grenades or anything. And again, I realize that that may not be within the purview of this board.
I can reply.
Yeah, I just wanted to. I have been outside the town hall for probably thirty years for one campaign or another, I think, even when I wasn't running. And I have found last several elections, people are stepping out much more and impeding voters. Um, I was in the corral all day yesterday and I I felt like I was able to talk to people. Um, and I felt that voters, I think. I think voters have felt intimidated in the past few years and I I'm concerned about that because I I, you know, that's the purpose of election day, not for all of us to be able to to jump in front of them and say things. So I didn't mind it. I guess I'll just see that.
Or based on the state reason.
Yeah, and I'll just add context to both of them. Uh, on the second point, to have the barrier setup was my decision uh based on a conversation with a police chief and some calls he was getting. Um, with some passions ran high on some of the ballots, we thought it was best to be over cautious than have someone say they were accosted outside and then they vote one way or the other and then to close votes and it comes down to, you know, people being turned away or not. So um I'll take the heat of saying criticism on that. Um, when it comes to uh the voting, uh talking to our town clerk, um we had about the same turnout in Woodstock as we do for presidential primary year. So twenty twenty, twenty sixteen goes around the same. Um, the big issue they had was their machines from the state they got are relatively new and it takes more time to load the ballots. And with, I think we had twenty seven petitions uh with twenty seven articles. On top of the school, on top of the presidential primary, some people were putting it through eight or nine single sheets. And that caused some of the backup. Um, they did come with a solution halfway through the day, which was to have a ballot box. People just dropped the ballots off, which cut down the line, but then increased the timeframe of the results after seven o'clock. Uh, but those boxes come from the state, they're made from the roughly from the state and we don't have have a say in what we can do now on that.
Now, again, I realize that this was not intentional.
I think you're not wrong. I don't see any comments online.
All right, reorganization of the board.
I make a motion to appoint Ray Bouchois as chair of the board.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to Susan Ford. A second. Aye.
Thank you. Um, just adopted newspapers. That's the standard.
That first hand one and then the Blue Valley News as a backup.
I would make that motion. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we are.
I just wanted to say I I while we use papers, I would like to also make sure we think the list serve has become increasingly popular. So I I would like to make sure our notices continue while not obligated, but to get posted on serve.
Yes. Because there was something. I haven't asked my view on what. Media connection or breadth.
So we do try our best to put everything on there. We are see aren't perfect. Um, we do have it on the website by state statute. It needs to be up there. Uh, we've also started using the Substack to get it out as well. No, I don't believe it. No. It's all on websites. If you go under um agendas, it's there. I know, I know. I I I I will take that today was not. Yeah.
I'm fine with that. Oh, do we have this?
Going to work for the town if we make it mandatory to put it on a agenda post meeting notices on the list, sir?
Um, I think we can if you want. I mean, we do try to do it all the time. Um, I don't know if I would.
Can you look into the possibility and we can look at it next?
Yeah. And that's a better way to do it. Just because the list sort of goes away or something else. Um, we want to make sure we're covered.
Maybe talk. Well, I guess we'll have all the departments come to us at a meeting coming up. And so maybe we can talk to the other departments about it as well.
Yeah, I I think.
Departments and commissions.
Um, communication from town hall has been an ongoing conversation since at least before I started. Um, I think it's going to continue to be one.
Yes. I think, you know, why don't you look into it? But we'll we'll see the managers too. And I just think I don't want to jump into something that's not going to work. Just pull a point.
But tax agenda is kind of um the appointments, the ones highlighted um on the on the right are the ones that have to be reappointed. I have one or two updates, um but I don't think they're um. So we got confirmed that Brad Prescott will remain um the Two Rivers representative. Uh, Nicole Green, you're going to stay on the planning commission. Kim French will stay on the TDRB. Um, Lauren Dursey uh will stay on the conservation commission. Um, but I believe Lynn Peterson is not. So we won't reappoint her. I'm sorry.
And I'm going to approve the whole slate.
Okay.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussions? I I'm sorry, God. I have um concerns with the EDC. It's supposed to be two, three year term and we don't know how long EDC has had these members on.
Oh, whether they're term limits.
Yes. I know the EDC does have term limits.
So if you want, I don't think the EDC has a meeting coming up.
Thursday.
Next Thursday. Um, so you don't reappoint them, they won't be members for next Thursday. Um.
Well, I know Fred is new, so I have no problem. She just got appointed.
So you could up. Um, you could appoint them um under the assumption that they've they won't go past a two year term. Yeah. And then we can confirm if they have, then they won't be appointed.
You want to make that? Or amend it?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Letter of engagement. Their financial.
We need to.
Oh, we need to do the public trustees.
Oh, I'm sorry. So that was going to be under discussions, was it not?
Oh, okay. I thought it was with appointments.
Well, actually, I think Jill is going to advocate for a vote, so maybe we should actually run a vote. I might advocate against it, but.
So there should have been two trustees of public funds on the ballot. There was an error made. There are two of us who are willing to serve and yesterday we both got votes. Uh, one had six, six, I had six hundred and Lauren, who's online, had four hundred and fifty seven, which I think is an endorsement that you have two people who are willing to do it enthusiastic and accepted by the public. So I would ask you not to go through the written roll of advertising for a job that's been empty for a year, but to treat Lauren with respect and appoint her to something and correct the error that was made.
Um, I appreciate uh what Jill said and um Lauren's willingness to run um and uh be engaged with our municipality. Uh, we obviously want to encourage people to be here and and support us and build the process. Um, I do have a state statute in front of me, uh chapter thirty three, subsection zero zero six, nine sixty one, uh which basically kind of lays out what should happen if a town office is not filled. Um, and they say that the select board um should post a vacancy in two public places uh within ten days of the creation of that vacancy. So I read that as as of right now, there's an open spot. Today, one, the select board has ten days to post all the open spots. Um, and then do whatever process they want. I think when we had open staff ward, at one point we had interviews and applications, another one which appointed someone uh right afterwards. I was like, wouldn't take the same approach, but I would just advise to post it first um and then appoint someone after the fact, just so we're covered in case any issues. And there's some other spots we do have to uh advertise as well because there are other open positions. So we post them all at once and go from there will be my advice to the board.
Is there a distinction because there was an error in the ballot? I mean, there wasn't really an open spot because there weren't.
So we can get into the the details of this. Um, but what happened when both applicants submitted their uh petition, they both put the three year term and the spot that was open was a two year term uh based on they had been filled for a year. Uh, so they both put under the three year one. Um, this error we should have caught by the same time their petition both said three years at the same time. Um, so that's where it kind of came to uh the unknown area. Um, so I'm just advise the board to follow state statutes, but um board is allowed to do what they want.
And I doubt you that we don't get into state statutes because of the error.
Any comment?
So if there wasn't an error, would we have had gone through this?
No, 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 there would have been two slots on the ballot with two different names and a focus.
To argue really, there should have been two spots and one should have been vacant.
No, one should have had Lauren's name on it and one should have.
If you both have put down the three year term and not a two year term, right?
Oh, right. And then we could have had a writing campaign for Lauren.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. I don't know. I I I worked with Lauren at the end and I know she's really qualified for this, so I I hate to have to see her.
I mean, I. Yeah, I think still it's delayed. It was what's going to happen.
When's your next meeting?
It's our next.
Uh, for the public trustees funds, we have two decisions to make next week.
I think considering it's an error that's shared, I would like to move forward and appoint personally. Um, regardless of, I I think the state statute is helpful, but I do feel like we should have caught the error. Um, and she did. She did collect signatures for a petition to appear on the ballot.
Did you make that?
I'll make the motion. A second.
Motion made a second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren, for being willing to serve.
Yes, very excited.
Back to the letter of engagement.
Um, so as we discussed at the last meeting, um, the board decided to go forward with Gallagher Fund and Company uh to the financial diligence on the Aqueduct Company. Um, I shared at that meeting kind of what they were looking at in front of you is kind of the actual task they would do and how they do about it. Uh, before this meeting, the chair and the vice chair myself had a conversation with them where we asked some more in depth questions. Um, I think I was satisfied with the answers. I'm sure the board thought. Um, so what the timeframe would be, um, what I'm asking today is for the board to give me approval to um sign this engagement uh with Flynn. The Aqueduct is meeting uh tomorrow with the shareholders and with the board to finalize or to officially approve the letter of intent the support signed. Uh, they gave Jirell Billings the approval to um sign it. So we get the process going. Uh, but they'll actually have the full vote of both board and stockholders uh by Friday morning, at which point I would then sign this letter and then we would be engaged with Gallagher to do the financial due diligence. Um, they laid out today about a three to six week process depending on how easy to get the information and how easy it is to analyze it. Um, so that's what we have in front of you.
So is there a motion to prove ever after years that the is willing to move forward?
I'll make the motion. Aye.
Both teams elected.
So uh, certainly broken record, uh title twenty four, chapter thirty three, subsection six, nine sixty one of the state statutes uh list that any position that's open uh has to be posted by the board within ten days. Uh, so I recommend that any open position that currently exists after yesterday's voting uh be posted uh and we receive any interest from residents. Uh, and that at which point anyone who comes forward, we can bring to the board and then we create a process for them.
So is the only, so the only open position on our sheet is the one conservation commission member? Um, and then we have.
So there is uh an open mission on the EDC.
Okay.
Uh, on the finance committee. Um, and then anyone also who doesn't accept, you know, the letter we'll send out to them.
Okay.
Um, also have the town has not yet voted to get rid of the auditor. The town position. So those three positions are also open as well. Um, and I'm sure there's a few more that we're forgetting uh that are open.
And the EDC meets.
Thursday.
For a second.
Thursday. So.
And we're still loading answer on.
Okay. I know that just what we're going to do. Yeah, that's just the what we have to do. So no votes necessary.
Let's leave the reschedule of the month meeting.
Um.
In that day.
Yeah, the trustee, the the village meeting that night on the nineteenth, the one slipboard is scheduled to have the meeting. Uh, so I think we originally talked about doing during the day. Uh, I think ten AM and nine AM were thrown around, but I don't know if we've come to our final decision or not.
Nine was the last time that we talked about. Carrie, are you going to be able to do that? I know you had a conflict.
Aye.
So we need a motion for that, don't we?
Yeah.
And to reschedule the March meeting for March nineteen, nine AM.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
For information, the um student from Vermont State University came to the Southwoodstock plant um yesterday and Tim Lyon, incredibly thorough floor. And Mark Hunter was there to answer questions and um my calendar shows that we'll have something preliminary from them the afternoon of the nineteenth.
Great.
Yep. Uh, so last one is town meeting information review session. Um, we found that kind of just talk about uh how it went now or eleven days ago. Um, how we went yesterday. I think Roger already brought up uh the conversation about the the ballots going through the box um and kind of being outside, but I don't know if the board wanted to kind of have a larger conversation about everything. So.
Um, I had a few points just to jump off of Roger's feedback. I think that we've talked about in the past and and certainly I think we should get a head start on this standardizing the language for the articles, especially the special articles, so that people understand that uh we are raising tax not just appropriating. Uh, and that we communicate those to the people that are interested. I think there's also, you know, I think we learned a lot this year and how we can communicate better with the public. Um, I think some of that can be done in the town report. I think some of that can be done online and I think some of that can be done in the information session. You know, Greg and I were talking about yesterday. More than one information session um to help educate public when involved in the article. Um, I don't know if anyone else has thought of that, but I also, to Roger's point, if I could go back to the operation of yesterday, I do think it's important as if we do start to see higher turnout that we're reevaluating and making sure that we're you know, prepared for higher turnout as we move forward. We've got at least two more elections this year. Um, so it's good for us to work with the clerk's office to make sure and then just the piece to make sure they have everything they need ahead of time.
Can they get a second machine?
I I was told they cannot. Yeah, it's the state allocates them.
Our other machine is so much faster.
We could, yeah, we could get more pens. Yeah, but.
More pens.
Four pens.
Well, people wouldn't take them home.
Yeah.
Me a security check.
Put a wine bar in the line.
And I did see most of the people that turned away came back.
Yes.
Which was nice.
Right.
You know, no, but they shouldn't have had to do that. Exactly.
It could also be better about making sure that uh information is aligned, website, and not opening on the state.
Yeah.
Now, what's been doing. And I also heard reports of people receiving the wrong people take that from ballot.
Yeah.
So some people did not receive the page of school bond ballot.
Yes. And others not the presidential. I mean, it was, it was a mission. Yeah, it wasn't anything, any one ballot that was consistently missing. No.
And I think if we have a second informational meeting, I think this should be I a Saturday morning and and evening.
And I think too, doing at least one in here where we have the Zoom. Cause down there, we're just using a laptop because all the technology we have. Um, so having it here where we can film it and maybe it's just the board talking about going through everything without um comments is we can get something recorded in a nice way. Uh, but I think still about to one of Laura's points about um town meeting as a whole. And I know Susan set out um a list of calendar topics. I think we should make sure that um town meeting probably starts around the budget process. So end of August, September. So we have not have the same conversation next year because what happens is come December, uh, we get so inundated with stuff and timelines that we fall back on what we've done in the past. And I think it's good to, if we start having conversations in August. Uh, there's also a conversation about how to um have the budgets and nonprofits work. Uh, so those conversations should start earlier too, so nonprofits are aware of what it may look like, uh, so they can prepare uh properly for that as well.
Definitely. Soon we do that, the better.
And in terms of format, I know a lot of people yesterday advocated staying for the Australian ballot process. Obviously, the measure that we did this year was temporary for everything to be from the Australian ballot. So if we want to change it permanently, we would have to have a
A meeting?
A public hearing where we vote on it from the floor. Yeah.
No, I agree with that. I think we need to. I don't think we would have had enough people at a town meeting that make downstairs holds about twenty or fifty people. Thirteen hundred people, over thirteen hundred people in voted.
So I think um the board probably has to have a discussion about we're looking at potentially a few special town meetings we now in next March. Uh, maybe trying to schedule them out so they can be only one properly, but then advocating it to word out about why we're having them to make sure that everyone knows what's going on and we have time to kind of say in a case what we want.
I think having this sooner as close to town meeting as we can, when it's properly worn and have it be an evening meeting as we usually do would be beneficial so that we don't wait until later in the year.
While it's still fresh in everyone's mind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So if everybody can look at that, the list I sent this morning and just let me know because I think then Eric and I can start putting months to the different topic things and I would like to get that out so that um everybody in the public has an expectation that, oh, you know, the board is going to hit this topic on in this month and they'll be prepared for us.
Yeah, so I have a question. We're talking about, obviously, a town meeting about town meetings and that's and then a town meeting about the water company, I assume. And what else? What what are the other potential special town meeting?
You don't know. With hearings, right?
I would have to look up what the terminology is, but it's, yeah, it's supposed to be, you know, um, we're going to have to have. Well, if we want, if the board decides a potential to change town meeting to Australian ballot, that has to be uh if the select board decides to uh acquire the aqueduct and the bond is needed, there'll be a meeting for that uh for the wastewater plant.
And that's that's got to work, right? Is that correct?
If there's a bond vote, it'll be Australian ballots.
Oh, okay. I see.
Um.
Oh, so so you're talking about the vote to purchase to to go out for the bond? Or do you have to have a vote about actually acquiring one?
So the select board can vote to acquire um real estates and companies. Um, if there's if there's no cost associates with it or it's a budget cost, if it goes, if it's a bond, then has to go to the.
I I'm just thinking that if you're going to have several at least two town, well, at least one town meeting where you're going to have to have a fourth vote, correct?
Yeah.
Um, and then you're going to have informational meetings. Is there any reason those can't be combined so that the larger.
Question for you, Roger. Do you think that, you know, as a citizen, the capacity for folks to handle more than one issue at a time would be welcome?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know. I just, you know, the the more meetings you have, the less.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Not that that's true, that that there's certain circumstances, but um I don't know. It's something to think about because I I I guess the aqueduct is time sensitive, right? Oh, we're very time sensitive in the sense that we can't add any more people. The floor vote on on going to all Australian ballot is time sensitive in the sense that it has to take place well before whatever the hell we're calling it next year. But I don't know, you know, other people know how how sensitive these time sensitive are better than I do. So I don't know. It's just something to think about. I I don't, I I you're right. I don't have an answer whether it would actually be better or whether people can hold on to the tubular at the same time. I don't.
Yeah, I think it'll be a challenge for. Yeah, I think it'll be a, a challenge for us to, uh, balance, you know, doing the normal work of the select board, uh, month by month, uh, with tackling these big questions and scheduling them so people can get all, all information, get the correct information. But also taking consideration with the aqueduct, you know, the consequences of waiting and what that means. Um, and then how that fit into the schedule because Jill's here and what she'll say is every day that we can't build a house. We're all further behind. Yeah.
I guess the other thing the issue of paying both for the aqueduct and for wastewater bomb. There's going to be a lot of blood on the floor, so maybe that wouldn't.
And the wastewater one, I think pretty set, we're going to.
There, no, we're going to remember.
November, when we have a regular election. So it'll be, we'll be having a lot of talks in the meantime.
Take that because I didn't know that. Um, you know, and maybe I should, but I didn't know that. Uh, and people are starting to get anxious. Especially when you talk about the aqueduct because the same issue. Uh, or at least it's going to trigger people to think like, what the hell do I think?
Yeah, uh, so we have a conversation with the current engineers of the main wastewater plants, uh, that's coming, where they're going to lay out the schedule. Um, and also, um, I think advocate to keep using them. Um, and at that point, uh, we'll know for sure. So we'll actually schedule the bond votes with them and then we'll work backwards on how to do everything from there.
Okay.
Um, it's not a public meeting. It's just a get together. So, um, I'll talk to the board and we can get back to.
Any other business?
And so I will clarify what you said, uh, it's time, the whole select was like a me there. The chair and the vice chair are, are invited. So I want to start to say that. It's not a private meeting. We have a select board.
Again, any other business? Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.